I've got 4:01, so we will get started today. So thank you for joining us for tonight's special meeting for the Board of Trustees, open session. We have, don't have our budget valuations. Would we like to start with that?
We can go.
Okay. We could start then with our agenda item. First of all, before I do that, I'd like to welcome Mary Hernandez de Carles, joining us for her first official board meeting. So obviously, February will be our first regularly scheduled session. But thank you all for taking the time today. I know you're all very busy spending your Friday nights doing this. So very much appreciate your time. Thank you for being here and Mary, joining us. All right, so let's get into it. We have on the agenda today our Executive Director Search Process formal pickoff. If you will, so if we want to just go through the packet or if there's presentations prepared, what makes the most sense?
Yes, so Tori was really the point person who was involved in the search process past time. Myself and other administrators were as well. But she worked with the Board of Trustees the closest. So she prepared the packet for us about the search process, and she was going to talk a little bit more about those details just to give you guys some insights and in case you had any questions about what was on the document.
And I'd like to add, forgive my voice. Tori, we need to realize the investment of time and money on Tori's behalf. She worked on this nonstop for four months. Pretty much all of her grant, all of her funding duties, all of her other duties had to be set aside because this is an extremely time-consuming process. On top of that, Nicholas and also Dana spent a good portion of their time also, like maybe a quarter of their time each month, two and a half. It is a time-consuming process just to gather the information, to get the documents to the right place. And just wanted, did want to stress that that is a factor we'll need to be considering.
Tori, are you ready? Sure, usually I sit over here, but since we're live or whatever, maybe I'll come up here so that people can hear on if they can make it.
Yes.
And then if I need to switch to a different document, I'll just go do that. So I don't know, did you guys have time to review it? I know these special meetings, it's not as much time. Are there any questions to start off? What do you want, Echo? Should I just walk through what I gave you?
Yeah, if you don't mind going through. I was able to briefly review, but sure.
So Echo had requested a few different things. The job description, which is at the end, the laws, which is toward the end, and then kind of what we did in 2021 when Jerry left and Renee came on. This is a solidly trustees' part of the process. So the trustees are the ones who kind of decided the process. But what they decided was they did not want to go with an outside company. They wanted to do the search in-house and they wanted staff help. Dana was actually interim director then also. But she and others were considering applying for the job. And so the trustees were worried about them being involved in the early parts until they kind of finalized that decision. And because I was already the liaison and they were comfortable with me making packets and things like that, they sort of officially designated me as the person to help them, you know, basically as their secretary-type person for the process. So that's what we did. We did come up with a timeline. It really varied because we wanted to post the job for at least four to six weeks. They decided about six. After about four, we started looking at the applications. But it wasn't a set timeline because it just depended on what kind of response we got to those applications. And then we had target dates of doing the whole process within four months, which is about how long it took. The job itself was already posted before the trustees started looking for applications because, just like now, it had been in force for a long time. So when Jerry, at that time, announced her resignation, it got posted then. So it was posted before they really started coming up with questions and things like that. So that'll be a little different that time, this time, because it hasn't been posted yet. The budget, because it was in-house, I guess as Janice was alluding to, included a lot of kind of sunk costs. So our staff time that would have been doing other library services was put toward it. So that wasn't really quantified in terms of hours or how much kind of the library lost in terms of time. But it really was pretty much my full job for four months. And then everybody else helped as necessary. The only other budget costs for them were, they had roughly about 800. I looked back, I do have those materials, but I didn't bring them because I didn't know how much detail you wanted. That included posting the job, which would be different this time because we post differently. We have a service, we have a, Bamboo is our HR program, so we post there. I think maybe Monster or something, you know, some of these, whatever, Indeed, one of these places. So whatever the costs of posting the job were, there was a line item for potential relocation, which was discussed, whether the trustees would want to give a relocation allowance if someone came from out of state. So that would be something you would decide before you do the search probably about whether you want to offer that or not. And then there were line items for, of course, the final in-person meetings. So just, you know, the food you need for those sorts of things, the travel, if you have a candidate who's traveling to kind of the final in-person session. Got to remember, this was right after COVID. So a lot of it was done virtually. But I'm assuming the ease and how cheap it is, you might want to do parts of the process virtually again too, whether it's with us or with a company. The interview questions was a series of meetings. So how we did that is we took a bunch of questions that the library already uses from ad staff for different positions. We asked all the trustees to come up with their own sets of questions. We did a public survey and asked the public to send in any questions they wanted the trustees to consider asking. So all of that process took several weeks. Then we had a series of meetings where I made like this print and everybody said like, I want to make sure, you know, section A, you know, J1, like maybe John's first question and Diana, number 12, is included in this section, et cetera. They started with the legal disclosures just to make sure they weren't putting time into candidates who didn't understand what they would have to do on the far end. So the I-9 requirements, since we're a government agency, you have to have that. You have to have the background check, et cetera. The conflict of interest policy and the law, what's required by the law. So we had candidates. After the first round, we, of course, they excluded people who didn't meet the requirements, maybe didn't turn it in on time, maybe didn't have a degree if that was what they were requiring, et cetera. And then everyone who was qualified, they sent that legal disclosures because actually a few people didn't take the time to fill that out and send it back. You know how job applications can be, sometimes people are more motivated than others. The rounds, they decided what they wanted to do. So they wanted a first round, which was a written question round. After selecting all the questions for the rounds, they kind of set out like, these are ones we want written answers to, these are ones we want in each other's stage. So the questions for all the rounds were decided in advance. And then two or three questions, and I do have all of those still. If you do the process and want to see those, I can send those to you guys separately. I just didn't know how much information you really wanted in this, but I have.
Do we have the written questions?
I have, I have everything, including everybody that applied, and I have all that information.
I think the written questions list for sure.
Yeah, so like for each round, I have a PDF of what the final kind of questions were for the first round, second round, third round, et cetera. So for the first round, those questions were emailed by me, staff is me, with a deadline. So the trustees decided how long they wanted to give the candidates. I think it was a little less than a week. I think they wanted to, part of the test that they wanted to see was how, not how quickly, it wasn't 24 hours. I think it was, you know, by the next Monday or something to give them some time. And if they couldn't meet that deadline, to let them know why. So sort of a little test of what communication was like, how did, how did they respond to the written questions? Did they like those? So then there was a meeting to review those and see if they cut anyone. The second round, then, they chose a group of people to do individual trustee Zoom meetings, interviews with one-on-one. So those were set up for each candidate and scheduled. So again, depending on how many people make that second round, each of those is its own meeting. And then, of course, there was a meeting after all of those were complete to decide who moved forward. The third round, again, were individual Zoom interviews with administrative staff. So they tasked the administrative staff with coming up with their own set of questions. They did ask to see those questions, but they didn't change them, they just wanted to know. And then they did mute themselves but listen into the interviews because they wanted to observe how the candidates presented themselves to the people that they would be supervising. Because sometimes, depending on the person, that can be a very different dynamic than if you're talking to your boss, how you talk to the people that you might be supervising. And it gave the ad staff an ability to kind of get in whatever their questions were to the process. After that, there was a meeting between the trustees and the ad staff to kind of talk through, the trustees decided that they didn't want an official recommendation because they didn't want the candidate, the ad staff to get too caught up in hoping their person won, but more so just talking through any red flags that the ad staff noticed, any kind of nuances that they noticed that maybe everybody else didn't. So just kind of asking questions of the ad staff because they had observed those about, you know, who they liked certainly and what they were concerned about in terms of the answers. Because of course, all of us work in libraries or in the library. So we, you guys as volunteers, even having done library stuff for a while, have a different set of knowledge about what might be necessary. So that was a productive process. And then the references were done before the final in-person interviews because, of course, that could involve travel and more cost for the library. So those, the trustees kind of split them up and did try to call all three. In their process, they required three references in the application process. And then there was another meeting for them to discuss those answers and see if anybody was eliminated before going to the final step. They did invite three people to in-person interviews, but one ended up taking a job before his came, and he happened to be the furthest away. So that saved the library some money. So it was only two in-person interviews and they were a whole-day ordeal. So sort of like the orientations you guys do, we started with really just traveling to all the branches. They had saved a set of questions. And the way they did it was they had two of those questions that they wanted each candidate to come prepared to give a presentation on so that they could see what their presentation skills might be in a meeting setting. So they had prep time, with prep time, basically. So before the interview, I basically sent an email that said, you know, you've been chosen as a finalist, here's your schedule. The trustees would like you to come prepared to do a presentation with exhibits if you want. It was kind of up to them, or you know, they could do exhibits, they didn't have to. They could, if they wanted packet, you know, us to print packets, we would. But it was kind of totally on them, how they wanted to present, but to come prepared to present answers to those two questions. And they were pretty general questions, were a quick exercise. And then there were another set of questions that kind of completed that in-person set to as a presentation. And then the others that the candidate didn't know about really before they got there that they asked after they had gone around. And I do remember like one of them was, you've toured all the branches. And so now you have a better feel, having seen this, I know you've researched it, but having seen it, what do you, you know, what do you think about this? Or, you know, the layout of this, or staff, et cetera. So and then, of course, they met to make the final selection and offered, the offer can be done multiple ways. Obviously, they become an employee of the library, so our HR department has to take over at some point. But in that case, the president wanted to actually make the call and offer and had us prepare an offer letter. And that's it. So I mean, I think the things to remember, whether you do this or go with a company, are that it would be a lot less work for us not to have to shepherd you through this process, although I certainly didn't particularly mind it. It just meant I couldn't do other library stuff. But some of this stuff is, any interviews you have, we still have to notice them as meetings. So there's still a fair amount of staff involvement because you're a public body, unlike when there's kind of an internal HR search or something. So every time you guys meet to talk to a candidate, it either has to be an open or a closed meeting. Usually the line is any, anything with candidate, specific candidate information. So once you start talking about names and backgrounds, all of those, of course, can be closed. And mostly, everything up until that point is supposed to be an open. If there's ever a question, we can ask the attorney. So I think that's about it. Now, and then after that, so that was actually the search itself. In terms of communications at that time, Nicholas was pretty new, but he put together, I just put what, this really pretty brochure, like a recruiting brochure. We included this as a link with the job description. And communications conducted the survey of the public. And again, the only survey question was, do you have questions that you would like the trustees to consider asking? So those were in that kind of matrix choosing which questions. And one or two of those questions were added in. They didn't ask every question the public had. And any questions about that? Kind of everything? So we also included, because we know several other libraries who now use companies. And again, the trustees looked at that at that time. But you've got to remember, we had just expanded. So they've never done anything like a search before. But now we're solidly a bigger library. So most libraries our size do hire a search company. I just put in here, there was a search in Kentucky, I saw pretty recently, that's about the same size as Christian County, at about the same salary offering, just like in library listservs or whatever. So I reached out to the company involved. They've done searches, they specialize in library searches, library director searches. They've done, I think, 30, 40 states, almost tons of states, well over 100 libraries. So they're sort of like the go-to library organization. I reached out to the interim state librarian, because there's been a change there, and asked if she was aware of any other companies that libraries in the state have used, just to kind of give you, I mean, this is all somewhat last minute. And she said she wasn't. We do know Springfield Green used a different search company, I think Scion, which doesn't specialize in libraries. But we didn't get that information because we don't know if you're even interested in going that direction. So we decided not to waste that time until we figured out what you wanted to do. But that's there. I did reach out to the one that did the Kentucky search, specializes in libraries, and just said, we're a similar-sized organization, the trustees are about to start their search. Do you have a ballpark of what you would charge? So that's what this email in your packet is. They said this is definitely.
I looked them up, I counted 37 states and they'd done over 120 searches. In Missouri alone, they searched for a lot of the libraries. In Columbia, Joplin, Kansas City, Kirkwood, St. Charles, and St. Louis County. And they have extensive experience. And my understanding, what I read about them, if you had had a chance to read that information prior to meeting is, and I'm not saying we need to go this way or not, but they, they break it down. They do it, they do all the nitty-gritty stuff and they work for us. They would come and work with us and, and just basically be our headmaid in providing everything we could possibly ever want. So even though the, I was reflecting on the cost, and that's why I brought up the last time, the time consumption of doing all the coordinate, all the organization. It is a cost, but it may be a worthwhile investment. And that's just only because of my previous experience going through the process.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we've never done that, obviously been involved in that. So the only email I sent after this was asking how they determined those estimates. And they did say that it's a ballpark estimate. If you wanted to continue, the first step would be to have a meeting with them and they would go through what you wanted. That it is based on the size of the district, but not solely. They need to know from you guys how many meetings you want to have virtually, how many you need to do in person, if you want one of their staff people to be present for at least the last, you know, parts of the interview process, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So if you decide to go that route, obviously, you know, we can help you look for other companies or you don't need our help if you don't want it, you know, it's up to you. But just to put, that's how some people in some libraries do it. We went ahead and put the trustee manual, which obviously all of you have from your orientation, that's created by the Secretary of State and where they kind of try to flesh out the practice and law and requirements for the state. So that, they have like an eight-page section on how they recommend doing their searches. So I just threw that in there, it's an excerpt from that. And then Echo had asked for the job description. So the current job description that, of course, you guys used with Renee up until this point is in there, as well as the requirements and the pay scale from the pay scale you guys just approved. And then John sent some possible revisions or language that I guess he wants to maybe put into the job description. Any questions about that now? If you have them throughout the process, it's fine too. Certainly, if we do the search in-house or even if you go with another company, we have all the questions that we've asked, I can give you those. If there's any other parts of that process I mentioned that you're interested in, you know, I still have the folder since I ran it. So you're just lucky that the person that ran it is still here, yes. So, but I am not an HR expert. So, and at that time, we didn't have someone completely designated as an HR person. The director was the HR director, completely did not have help. Like Mary has background in that. So we have a much more fleshed-out HR department now than we did then. So I think it would be up to Dana completely, as she's in charge of the staffing. But I think that it would probably be a bit more of a team effort this time because we have more in-house expertise than I really just was like a secretary for the process. Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much, Tori. This is very helpful doing this in my day-to-day job. I know how much work it is and I'm sure Diana's done the same with others. So appreciate all the detail, background, Janice, especially the context of the lived experience as well as the staff. So appreciate you guys. So what questions do we have, like in just open discussion?
I have a question about the email. So I gleaned from this, it's $31,000, just a rough estimate of what they would charge?
Yes, so they said the $31,000 would be if they did the entire process with you. And then that second cost would be a different service they offer, so not a stacked service. That would be if you did some of it in-house, but you wanted their help making sure that it got into all the, you know, that they can help kind of expand where it's posted and make sure that they help you with the recruitment, basically. But again, that is not a set cost, that is a ballpark. The only thing I did was give them our website. I didn't even give any details about it. I just said, this is who we are and I think we're about the same size as Kentucky. So I really just asked like, how much are you charging Kentucky? But they gave me kind of more than I asked for. So I told them they were, you guys were having a meeting soon and if they, you know, if you were interested, that we could help set up a meeting or just give you their contact information, you guys can set it up if you prefer.
Janice, you were involved in a prior search.
Yes.
How much time did the trustees wind up spending on that search?
A lot.
A lot, like multiple meetings?
Multiple, multiple meetings, Zoom meetings, again.
It was over 20 meetings. It was over 20 meetings in the course of about three and a half months. So almost every week.
And like at that time, because it was COVID, we met, just when we had the private meetings or Zooms, we met in this room and with our desk spread out six feet apart and the candidates or the cameras were up there, it is an extensive process. And that is something else to consider. It, it would use, again, I'm not saying yes or no on the company. I did know this was an option, not the last time. When I was reading the packet the other day, I, I just thought, oh my God, if we had had that. So, so much time, so, so much communication would have been made easier. You know, we're looking for someone with very strict, very high qualifications. We have $4 million budget. You know, we have a, you know, 60-plus staff, 60, 70. I don't know how many people are on staff exactly. And to, to just go through the weeds, to get the weeds out, I mean, that took weeks of just doing that. And like you said, we would, you know, we'd send out questionnaires and stuff and, you know, some people wouldn't bother to send them back. Well, if you cannot be timely in your response within a timeline that we're giving you to apply for this job, I don't think we need you because I don't think you'll be timely when you're on the job. Though that got also delayed. So it is, it is very time-consuming. It was fascinating. And Tori made it, because I was fairly new at that time. She offered a lot of information, explanations. And a couple of the other people on the board were more senior, had been through this process before and kind of took control, guided the process. I would say guided, they didn't take control, they guided. And, but they had that knowledge. For all of us, I, I don't feel like I'm, you know, just after one experience, I am not expert at this, I would not feel correct or I could learn. But we do not have experience in this particular thing, regardless of our jobs, our backgrounds, hiring, firing, working with companies. This is a unique skill set we're looking for. And so I was just like, oh my gosh, I wish we'd had that last time. But.
Other questions, discussion?
So $31,000, and I don't think we're going to be probably less than 15 meetings and still be very much involved. I, you know, I appreciate, you know, your comments, but I think we're still going to be very much involved. I've worked with talent agencies and been very disappointed on many occasions.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's worth the investment. If we already have a process, maybe we can look at it, tune it, and make it work for us.
I mean, the trustees invented that process.
And if it's a team, Tori, I think, you know, it doesn't all have to fall on you. You know, you can kind of share the labor, many hands make light work.
I would leave that up to Dana, but you'd have to negotiate with her about that.
But we do have some people in different specialized areas, such as Mary and different people, who, because of their skill set, could be of service. Whereas back then, we didn't have all that S clarified division because we had gone from two to also four. You know, the expansion of staff was quite a consideration at that time also.
Certainly, setting up the meetings is something that Dana and I will do, just like we do for regular board meetings. So at least in that part of the process, we'd be involved in making the materials packets. That would still be me also. And we would be in the meetings to help guide you through the actual meeting part. But I think Dana has a bigger pool of talent on staff to help with some of the legal requirements and technical job posting things than we did last time.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The only other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I spent a bit of time doing research on the job responsibilities that are outlined in the statute and then what we have in the Missouri library and documentation from the Secretary of State. And the research I did, it, it doesn't require a master's. It recommends it, it doesn't recommend a master's. It doesn't, there is no legal requirement for a master's degree in library science. And I don't want to restrict the candidates that we get to only include those. So I do think a master's degree would definitely be preferred, but I don't think it's required for library science. I think education or other things, other types of degrees could be equally valuable. And I want to look at the whole experience that the person has, not just their educational experience. Because there's a lot of practical experience. When you lead people, you've got a staff of 61, I believe, 60 now, or you're not including themselves. And managing 60 people is quite a chore. You've got a lot of personalities and things like that. The other thing that I really want to look at is the person's ability to manage facilities and resources. And I'm not sure you can just get that from academia. You have to have some practical experience in that, you know? Doing requests for proposals, looking at bidders, you know? That part of the business, I don't think is emphasized enough. And there's a tremendous resource here. Like you said, Janice, this $4 million budget is.
Okay, but I'm going to disagree with you on the point that I understand about the resources and I have appreciated your concern and attention to that from the very beginning, from the first day you were on, on board. I think that possibly is, and I don't know if this is the proper place to say it, I think that's a specific qualified person to hire in that position. I think for, I think we do need a qualified person. It is a $4 million budget. They need experience. They need to know how, that we are taxpayer-funded, their accountability, the tax levies, the scrutinization, the reports to the state, to the ILS, to the federal government.
the scrutinization, the reports to the state, to the ILS, to the federal government, auditing. There are so many things that are in a master's degree of library science, plus having 10 years of experience in doing that and handling people. I think maybe to divide what you're speaking of as one job. Nobody expected Renee to have to deal with the expansion of this building and everything. She went way above and beyond what we ever talked about in our original questioning with her. And she rose to the challenge. But I think some of that just needs to be a separate job description, a separate title. But I think the overall executive director of the library needs to have a tremendous amount of experience in libraries, in current law, in the issues that we are going to face, because they're doing that now. Every library across the nation is facing the issues we are now. And I think you need someone with that experience and who can handle that aspect. And that's not going to be somebody just off the street. We needed a nonpartisan person, an unbiased person, a person who is experienced and who is willing to follow the wishes, I don't know if that's the correct word, of the Board of Trustees, of our public, of the input we're getting from the community. But I don't think we can just have someone who's a good pal and can get along with people. I think we need someone who can be nitty-gritty, who can really get down to the business of how a library functions in this world right now.
I don't think we disagree in that.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say that I don't want the current job description posted. I want the revised.
I have a few disagreements with your revision. And I would also question that because we agreed on the current library executive director description in June when we renewed Renee's contract. And we also, we also approved of it again in November when we went through the current job titles and budget. There are just a few things on your proposed job description that I specifically disagree with. Under number one, leader management, I disagree with seek Board of Trustee approval for exempt new hires and terminations. That is not our job. If we're hiring someone to guide and be the director of the personnel, that is their job. That is not for us to get in the weeds. If we have a question about a person, if we have heard comments, if there have been comments from the public, then that is something to discuss privately. But that is, we do not have that knowledge to understand. Let's say somebody wears pink every day and we think because they wear pink, that's just really not appropriate at the library. But they may be damn good at their job. That is not for us to decide. The executive director, it's like a surgeon at the library, a surgeon at a hospital. Let's say you have the head surgeon of the hospital. So, the board hires the head surgeon. The head surgeon is then in charge of all the surgeries. He decides who does surgeries, who the nurses, the LPNs, everybody who goes there. Some of them may be real jerks. Some of them may be really weird. Some of them may be from other countries. I don't know. They could be allowed to, but if they're good at their job, that head surgeon has the right to have the people he trusts with people's lives to do the job. It is the executive director's job to do personnel, that they notify us, that they keep us informed, which has always been the case since the beginning of the library. That's great. And if we have particular issues, then that's for the board to bring up with the executive director. But for us to tamper with personnel, we're only responsible for the executive director.
Well, I disagree. What, all the examples you gave have nothing to do with what I'm talking about here. If someone gets terminated for cause, it's a legal issue. The board needs to know about it. I'm sorry.
They will be notified. They will be informed. She, the executive director, does not have to seek our approval pending that termination. They will do that according to their rules and regulations. We do not know those rules and regulations. We do not know that behavior. We do not know that job. We are not working with the people daily.
That's not statute, Janice. Janice, the statute says day-to-day operations. Hiring exempt directors, leadership, people who have discretionary ability in the organization, that's not day-to-day. Terminations are not day-to-day operations. That is not what the statute says.
The statute is in the packet if you want to read it.
I just don't agree that they should come and seek that from us. I think we should be notified and informed. I don't think it's up to them to hold up works and operations until they can gather us together as a group to finalize a decision.
Well, the other, the other issue, the school board has a similar situation where a superintendent or executive position wants to fire a staff member. They have no recourse. They can't go anywhere else. The executive director has final and ultimate say. They can't appeal to the board. This allows them to appeal to the board if it's a wrongful termination. What say you?
I say this is a legal matter and we need to consult our legal consultant on this because I don't think we are legal minds and I don't think we should get entangled in that. I would refer this question to the lawyer.
And we would seek the lawyer. But I don't think we can seek the lawyer and exclude the Board of Trustees. I think that would be wrong.
I just, I really feel that's overstepping the, my understanding of what a trustee is.
I assume a lot of this we would want to go through with Robert, obviously. So, I don't know if there's other questions. We want to start building a list of specific questions for Robert beyond just can you review this? Probably there's specific stuff.
We take the question back to Robert. Robert did look at it. He had no edits. So, we can take this question back to him if you still.
Okay, but I have not had a chance to speak with Robert. Just because you submitted it and he said, no edit, he has not heard my opinion or my thoughts on the matter. So, I would not take it as a one-on-one situation. I would want it to be discussed openly.
We are discussing it openly.
But I think that's a great point is we want to make sure that the employees are protected and, you know, they need to be provided with.
They are, they are through human resources. There is a process. They are protected. That has nothing to do with us as a Board of Trustees. That has to do with their signing a contract to work for the Christian County Library System, to go through their human, human resources, to go to someone there to express their concerns. It has happened before and they have a process to take care of that. That does not involve us.
And it should. That's my point.
It shouldn't.
Yeah, it should. Do you have any other issues with this?
Yes. Ensure collections reflect diverse perspective and comply with state and federal laws as well as community standards. We've discussed, and again, this, I would defer to the lawyer. This is more of a policy issue, not a job description. And I think that goes back to the board needing to define our policy to decide the boundaries and parameters of the diverse community that we serve. I do not feel that is part of the executive director's job. I think that is the board. Seek grant opportunities and additional funding resources for library initiatives. We have a person on staff who, job is that job description. That is Tori and that is part of the Division of Labor in the library. We have specialists who work on grants. Yes, at some point when, after grants have been sought for and worked on, the person in Tori's position previously, Tori now, works in coordination with the executive director. That is not the job of the executive director. That's one of those Division of Labor's. Also, a college degree in library science, there, there's no such thing as a college degree in library science. It doesn't exist. There are master's degrees in library science or there are doctorates in library science. It's either or. There is no college degree. There's no college degree for a speech pathologist.
Well, isn't a master's, isn't a master's a college degree?
I want to make sure it's master's or doctorate, not a four-year degree. It has to be a master's or doctorate to be a degree in library science. Before that, that's just a bachelor of arts or bachelor's of science. It does not specialize in library science and all the tremendous, tremendous parameter that that job. Another one, number nine, other projects and tasks as assigned by the Board of Trustees as required, as an executive director, will complete work requests in a timely and competent manner. That is just so unnecessary and so redundant. That's the whole description of the executive director's job for the one we used all last year. I mean, that is the job. It doesn't need to be stated. It just is redundant. There are many things on this page, I think, job that lack an understanding of the EEOC laws and what it means to be a professional librarian. And so, I, my objections are based on that description and those parameters.
I've yet to read a job description that didn't say other duties as assigned. And they're probably out there, but we're not going to have everything captured on a job description that might fall under an executive director. All of these things, even though most of them are delegated, the buck stops at the executive director. So, if it's not in their job description, then they're not going to be responsible for those things. They can delegate any and mostly all of this stuff.
Then I would reword this page to say that, that this is not specifically, the onus is on them to specifically handle these duties, but as these different issues come up, they do need to be aware of and partake in matters concerning these issues.
Yeah, I think we could add the word manage or overseas is responsible for, something like that. I think that works.
Sure. Just make sure you guys know it's, we have a couple of things in all the job descriptions for all library staff. They all have other duties may be assigned in there at the very beginning. So, that is on the current job description. And we also have requirements for communication with supervisors and coworkers as well as legal requirements like lifting, like, you know, the legal stuff that we have to have on everything. So, I'm not sure if you guys want to, like, discuss the changes you want to make now or if you want to, like, think on it for a week. I'm just making sure, you know, that we do currently have that in the current job description if you'd like to look at that again.
Right. The current job description talks about physical requirements, but then it says accommodations may be made for someone with disability. If that's something we need to have as a blanket statement, I think that's fine.
In by law.
Yes, we do. Mary, yes, we do.
It's required by law.
And if you, I mean, if you want an HR perspective on this, I mean, I can give it to you if you'd like to hear it, just high level, because, you know, we just got this and I don't claim to be a lawyer. But our goal here, as we look at this, we need to think of what our goal here is, which is to hire an executive director. We're not changing the job. We're not, the only thing I would say really high level is the new job description leaves out a lot of the job. And it includes a lot of things that aren't in the job. So, as our goal, looking for an executive director, somebody is going to think that this is the job and that's it. And we may not get the right person. And we may end up with somebody who is good with these certain things that are a tiny, tiny part of the job, but not get somebody who can, can do the things on the original job description, which has been written by people who were in the job and those that worked with somebody in the job that know what the day-to-day is like. And we need to make sure that whoever we hire has those skills. So, if our goal is to change what the duties are of the executive director or change policy, this is not when we do it. The process is long enough as it is and we need to make sure we get the right person. So, we need to make sure that the job description says what the job actually is and doesn't include anything that it's not or going to scare away some people and not attract the ones you want to attract. And nothing against any one comment, just when we look at our job descriptions, that's our goal.
Yeah, I agree. I served a year in compensation and benefits in HR, so I'm pretty familiar with job descriptions. What you don't want to do is have a four-page job description that outlines their daily activities or gets so specific that it's kind of a to-do list. That's too much. What you really want to do is give a flavor for the job. I'm with you. And at an executive level, they should be flexible enough to know the job could change a little bit through the course of their employment.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I, I mean, this one's much more streamlined and it's one page and that's nice. But if you look at the job descriptions, a lot of what is in the second or in the third and fourth page are just those legal things that we have to have in there because we're a government employee and it's all required. And a lot of companies don't use the job description as their job posting, but we do. And this is going to be a job posting and with all of that has to be in there. We cannot take it out.
Yeah, and John, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think you're arguing one way or another to not include the legal requirements. I think you're saying for the body or content of the job role, that's what you're comparing against. And obviously, we can certainly include whatever legal requirements.
Yeah, if there's legal things that, you know, we have to say, you need to change the rules.
And I'm not saying to have some of yours or not have some of yours. I'm just saying, remember that we have to leave that stuff in. And when you're thinking about it, when you're looking at each of these individual items, don't look at it as, is this what I want in the policy? Look at it, is this what I want the candidate to read? So, that's just my advice to you guys as you take this back and consider what you're putting in the job description, because we absolutely can add or take away from the job description. I'm definitely not saying we can't do that, but just keep that in mind.
So, I want to make sure I understood what you just said, that we, we have to have a level of detail because this would be the posting?
Yes.
What is driving that requirement? I've never seen.
We're a government employer practice, but.
But where is that in law? Where are you getting that from?
That's our policy.
Where?
I mean, you can have a different job description, but then we need to create a separate posting if you're wanting to split the two.
No.
And that's fine, too.
I guess my question is, where is the policy that says we have to have a job description that is four pages?
We don't. I never said that. I just said there are things in the job description that have to be there.
Which, yeah. Can you help us with things?
Well, we, the reason we have it in this format and have those things in there, because I'm not a lawyer, we had an employment lawyer look over our job descriptions and our handbook and.
And I think we do it again. We will have our lawyer look at it for employment law. I think, good idea. But what I don't want to do is get so specific that we're discouraging candidates. And I disagree that a master's of library science degree is a requirement for an executive director. I don't agree. There's no legal requirement for that.
I'm not arguing any, any individual points.
My concern there would be then you have many people who have bachelor's and master's who already work for the library. And if you reduce that standard and hire someone with less experience and less knowledge, you're going to have an idiot running the ship because you have people on.
That is rude.
Well, you will have, I'm just saying.
You should correct your statement and apologize to us.
Excuse me.
That's rude.
You will have someone who does not have enough knowledge to handle the job because there are people on staff who has been there much longer and with much more experience. And the respect issues, the ability to manage would be quite challenged because of their lack of experience.
Well, let's honor the process and interview the candidates, vet them and see that we're not hiring an idiot.
Agreed.
So, let's respect the process.
And you should apologize to us. That was very rude.
I just retract my statement and restated that, I believe. That is satisfactory.
I'm not. Are there other questions for the specific review, I think, that needs to go to Robert? I mean, I know we've started that process. I think that it can be, correct me, John, you sent it via email. I apologize. Did Robert respond to our email?
He did. He said he didn't see any edits, but Janice has concerns. Those concerns should have gone to the lawyer.
This is our first meeting. I'm not going to go behind your back and talk to a lawyer until I've talked to you all. I would talk to you all as a person. Another issue is, Robert, he has great credentials as a lawyer and I enjoyed our meeting with him. I felt he is a good man. This is employment law. This is HR law. We would. This is employment law. This is HR law. We would, I don't believe that is his specialty. This would need to have some handling by himself or one of the other people in their law firm, which is when we selected them, you said there are others who have different abilities. I would want to make sure legally that we stand correctly. And if we want to add this as an addendum to the job description to make sure our wording is acceptable, being an institution that is run by taxpayers.
Yeah, I think that's the point of having a lawyer. If you wouldn't mind, I'd taken some notes. Tori, did you take notes on what her issues were?
A little bit, yeah. I don't, so, yeah.
I was going to ask, it seems like we're getting really into the details of the process, which is your prerogative as the board. This is your search process, of course. I just want to make sure, we were talking about the process overall was the question on the agenda. So did you want to talk about that more or say you want to think about it and come back next week and decide more if you would like to do it internally or hire a company? Just to make sure we address that first before we get any further. Of course, Echo, that is your position to ask that question. I don't mean to get involved, super involved, including.
Great. I like that. Thank you. What is the group's thoughts on, do we have sufficient information to begin making the decision on whether we would consider this as an internal process or whether we would like to pursue the possibility of working with an agency? Are there questions on that topic?
Well, I wonder if we would be able to streamline some of the processes so it doesn't become so time-consuming? Would there be multiple rounds of interviews? Would you guys be open to just right off the bat, the initial job application, giving some essay questions to get a feel for the candidates are before you even, you know, opened it up to interviews? Again, just to save money, because I think, what was it? Thirty-one thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend on the hiring process.
My fear is that it doesn't alleviate the time involvement for the staff because we still have to notice the meetings, schedule the meetings, do the things. So it really is, seems like high-level project management and that. But really, we still have a significant staff burden and a significant board burden, even with the support, so.
Still have to interview. The only thing that's attractive about this is they have a one-year guarantee, so.
There's a little bit of a pro and con to it for sure. There is a pro that if we go to a company who has hired libraries before, they'll have candidates in there, like... They'll know candidates that would be qualified. So if they maybe applied for a different library position, they can headhunt for us a little bit more. If you have specific requirements, say, when we meet with a company, you can say, we're looking for someone that has experience in project management. Or if you have specific like requirements or skills, they might have people. I know that the company that Tori recommended, there was like a lower-cost option. So we could always reach out and ask if there is a lower-cost option. I'm just spitballing ideas that you, so you guys know about this. From there, like, we can certainly help you in however you want to do the process, though.
And I would like to correct a statement I made. In our educational requirements on the Christian County Library Executive Director Job Description, we do accept bachelor degree, masters of library and informational studies, but with 10-plus years of library or relevant experience. So I overstepped. I apologize. For me, it would be very important to have that masters of library degree, but someone with 10 years-plus experience with libraries, working with techs, he's working with all the organizations they have to that had the extensive broad range of experience needed for the job. I agree, and forgive me for being, for overstepping.
It is different to say these are requirements versus the revision is masters preferred. Those are not the same thing.
Personally, I don't think there's anything sacrosanct about a master's degree. I think the experience is a lot more important than the degree. And I haven't been in an academic environment for a very long time, but I have known some academics who would have difficulty coming in out of the rain. So I think the, I think the experience is much more important.
But I think specifically with libraries, with this type of institution.
Running a library or running, you know, some civil organization, although the thought of what a civil organization would be, I'm not sure what that would be. I think the experience is very important.
I think there are people out there and I think we can catch the net and find someone who meets everybody's needs.
And last time it was both. Renee had a degree and 10 years of experience in libraries. Prior to that, Jerry, same.
I think the two pressing issues are, do we go with a headhunter, headhunting firm? And then what do we use to post for the job, for the job description?
And the headhunting firm can help you with the job description revisions as well if you go with them. Otherwise, that's a process you do with us.
And if we want to do, like, if you would like to decide today if we want to do internal, like, processes or hire a company, we have a meeting set up next week, so we could go over more in detail. Like, if we decide to do internal, then maybe next week we could just discuss the timeline and the job description and get everything posted. That's just a recommendation, of course, but we can go either way. It's up to you guys.
Need more discussion?
Yeah, I think, I'm hearing that the two questions on the table are the, in choosing, what do we need to successfully make a decision on internal versus external? Are there additional questions that we are unable to answer tonight and we need to research externally? And then sort of if we choose internal or want to continue the job description revisions on our own, I'm hearing the list for Robert for review. What other questions might we have on what we would need to make a decision on internal versus external? Would it be helpful beyond this very, very high-level email, which is good, appreciate getting that, Tori, but to have a conversation with this firm, to vet them and hear more from a firm like that? Would that be beneficial to expand on what they led here? And like you said, maybe there's tiers of services from out there.
There might be tiers of services, and this is only one example. So we didn't reach out to other, we wanted, this was kind of like a discussion meeting. So we wanted to give, see where you guys wanted us to go with this. We can certainly, you would like to reach out to companies yourselves, that's fine. We could reach out to companies and get quotes for you if you'd like to review those, if you want to kind of alleviate those questions or concerns.
I like the idea of working with a professional company who's dealt with our subject matter, our search and specifics. I feel they would have the knowledge of state and local and national federal laws to see how the revisions could be incorporated or whether redundant with what's already in our job description. And that may be a simplifying process. You and I disagree with a word, but maybe to take it to a third party who has worked in this area, maybe just to get some guidance in this initial aspect. You know, and at that point, we have a clear job description that we agree on, like I say, from someone who has worked all across the nation, that if they can offer that bit of service to us, might help us get over this hump and let us proceed on our own from that point on. But I am, I am quite concerned with the wording. And that may just be me, and y'all can outvote me. That's all right. But I just, that's a concern for me. And as, forgive me for not knowing your name.
Mary.
And you, no, not you, Mary, the two ladies behind you. Forgive me for my wording, and you made a very valid point. Wording is very important. And I appreciate you bringing that to my attention, and I will be cautious in how I use my words.
I'm just curious, in the last time, the last time we had a search for an executive director, did our, did the candidates, like the pool of candidates that were interviewed, did they come, were they from all over the country or...
Correct.
They were? Okay.
We had some locals and then we had some out of state, yes. And there was, Zoom was really helpful for that reason, you know, we could do that. But then when we got closer to, well, we're getting down to the wire here. The board really wanted to meet them in person to get, people are different on in-person versus over the internet. So that's when we kind of discussed more about the budget and getting people, travel costs and stuff.
Okay. And some people who had applied withdrew because after researching our area, they liked the job description. They liked the size of the library, but they weren't sure they would want to move. We had a couple of people drop out on that basis. One, there was husband-wife conflict of interest with both getting jobs. And one of them dropped out in favor of the spouse getting a job in another area.
Is there a pulse on what the job market is like right now for executive directors? You guys that are in the trenches, what's the market like?
There's a couple, I know there's at least one director position open in Missouri. One was recently hired, although I can't remember what the library name is at the moment, forgive me. Directors positions don't open like very frequently in Missouri, and they're usually attractive positions because they don't come open very much, right? I would say that it's an appealing job, you know what I mean? But I wouldn't know, I think some people would move out of state for a library job, but then some maybe more settled. It's really hard to say.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I was, I was just curious because, I mean, I think that also factors in me personally in my decision-making. Like, is it going to be a struggle to attract candidates? Or, you know, are we going to have to rely on the help of a non-organization?
Right. It's hard to say, honestly. I think we'll, it depends on where we post it or how will we promote it. If we're promoting it, again, that's a lot of, you know, maybe time or work on our part. If we have a company, they're the ones who are reaching out to their networks and hiring and posting, maybe the areas that we don't know about. Hard to say.
And that was the two tiers that they did say, that they, they for sure have a bucket that is just kind of amping up the promotion and you still run most of the processes and then the other. And just to say, it's not, those are, again, I think I said that, but just, there was a lot of information. So those are not set prices. They were very clear that it would depend completely on how you want your process. So, and even the process we did, didn't, I mean, internally, we do for high-level admin positions, we do multiple rounds of interviews. So, and, you know, with a final in-person round for every higher-level position. So we have some internal, you know, kind of like practice, right? But, but there's no, like John's saying, there's not a specific way that it has to be done by law. And I think the search company or internally, you're going to be answering those same sets of questions. It just depends on who you're doing that with.
Did the search company say whether they bill by the hour or do they just quote a flat fee?
Well, I asked, I think it is a flat fee, but it's after they have an initial couple of conversations with you to find out what you want. So for example, like, let's say you had, you know, the process we had had like five rounds. Let's say you had, you know, let's say you had two rounds or eight rounds. Then they're going to calculate what that would cost. They said some libraries like to have their staff come in person to their meetings. And so then they have to charge travel costs to wherever they're traveling to, which I think, I forget, maybe this one was in Ohio or something. So, I mean, again, there, again, it doesn't have to be this company. This is just a broad example because we had never had that kind of quote at that time. Like Janice was saying, the board kind of briefly discussed it, but it had never been done for any other position here. We weren't familiar with other libraries who had done it. But now we're kind of in a different league of library size. And so now we are more familiar with libraries, and especially since Springfield just did theirs. I mean, they're way bigger than us, obviously, but not, and they didn't use this company. They used a different company, too. So, so I think all of that is negotiable.
I would think that there could be a two-tier process. If we sought internally to post and promote and are unsuccessful, we can certainly change our mind.
That was my thinking as well.
Options.
If we post it, we're doing it internally and not making any progress, then we start.
And that's why there wasn't exactly like, here's the timeline recommended because the previous board had that, too. They said they wanted to post for at least six weeks, see who they got and then, you know, I mean, but it could have been six months if they hadn't gotten candidates, so.
No, I don't know if this is the time, but, you know, I took some time to look over your, you can see what I wrote. I like purple a lot.
I see.
But, you know, because words matter, you know, and based on what you guys have said, you know, the way the job posting is listed, that's going to be the first impression that people have of what's happening in the Christian County Library. And I went ahead and I just, you know, I found other postings and language that I thought for other executive director positions. And I borrowed some of the language, and I don't know if this is better, you know, if I just read out some of the suggestions that I have so that we can see if you guys like it, because I know this material is going to go out to Robert or if we're going to have another meeting with Robert present to discuss.
Tell me how we do this so that Robert gets, I just don't want to keep hitting him individually with different drafts. So if we can combine Janice's questions, your suggestions.
I was just going to say, I'd be happy for Renee to PDF this to Robert for your plain page to be PDF to Robert, for Mary's suggestion to be PDF to Robert. I think from that, he would get an idea of our different thoughts.
And I would like to include Mary Miller's comments about the physical, any other legal things that should be in here. I don't want it to look completely different from the rest of our JDs, so.
So is this, are you, just to clarify for me, are you redoing the job description? Or are you saying like the posting?
We need, we need something to post, and Mary's saying, and I agree, the posting shouldn't be different than the actual job description, should it? I mean, it shouldn't.
No, no.
So we have, we have to fix this.
Regardless of what the suggestions are, for two reasons. One, we want it so professional. So obviously, we want communications to have, you know, the right font, the library graphics, all of that, of course. Because that will make a difference. But then, yeah, you don't want to end up on the other end also not having enough stuff or having too much, too.
This is a really big job.
Yes, but I think there's ways to be able to capture some of the duties without having five bullet points. Because that's something that can be discussed. And if you have someone that has managerial experience in a library setting, they're going to know what the details are. But, you know, when you, and so that's where, like, some of the things that I, the suggestions that I made, that I have here, I think touch on that because, you know, we want to make sure that this isn't a posting that gets placed and then we don't get much, many hits. And then it has to be refreshed and updated. I just think that's not a good look. So we got to get it right.
You also don't want to come a year from now when you're reviewing your director and you're trying to review on certain things that happened or him, on things that happened. And they're like, well, yeah, that was one of the other things I did. But according to my posting that I relied on to take this job and my job description, you can't review me on that. That was just something extra that I did. So you just don't want to end up in that situation.
Exactly. Job descriptions should have a shelf life.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't want to put things in there. They're going to go away. And you want to allude to things that might come onto their plate. So it should be short, probably too short, but four pages, I think, is too long, so.
I would agree. I would agree with that. We need to compromise, especially for a more professional position. But there are some things that are, we can't.
Wanted to invite the lawyer to the one of the meetings here with, after getting all your comments and concerns, and then there can be a discussion about it?
If he's going to give legal advice, then that's a closed session.
A closed session, a closed session.
I would think I would like to have him review the current job description.
And compare it to this.
John's page unmarked and Mary's and my, unless Echo and Diana have some information also, and our copies of John's page with our comments and see if he can legally incorporate these things in an acceptable manner that we are within the letter of the law and not, like you say, making it too restrictive, but also not making it so open or redundant. So may I make a motion that we send Robert, if Tori would PDF this information to him, the unvarnished copy of the four or five pages we have of the Christian County Library Executive Director Job Description, description, a copy of John's page of the overview, of the position overview, and then a copy of Mary's and my pages with our comments. And then a copy of Mary's and my pages with our comments, our concerns, our ideas about wording. And have him.
The two Marys.
Did you have comments on this page also?
Not if we send him the whole, I mean, if he can tell us what we can cut or not cut.
Yeah.
Although, remember that we're paying the lawyer by the hour. It might be a better idea to split up, think of what, about what you want. Maybe come with your minimum requirements or put it in our format that we use. But just giving him four different versions and saying, what should we do? That he's, it's not giving him a clear question, really.
Yeah, I don't think we were proposing that. I think we were going to consolidate and give it to Robert. At least that's how I.
That's not how I.
It's going to be a little hard for us to consolidate all of your questions and concerns into one. Is my, my, my concern here is, do we, are, are, I mean, that's why I mostly want to know. It's like, do you want us to make like one new job description and then give it to Robert to review?
Another suggestion possibly is that we go with the current executive director job description for our general release. And then as we do, do interviews and present questions, we could incorporate many of these issues into our interviews or questions directed at the candidates.
I, I oppose that. It's too restrictive. So I, I would like to make a motion that we look at the process and forego, ahead Hunter, I move that we go into a modified process, that we look at the process that you used in 2021, correct? For such a time as, what, four months? If we should, or actually, we can probably know within a month or two.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but Janice was in the process of making a motion, and we had clarifications.
Oh, I'm sorry, your motion first.
So Janice, if you'd like to finish your motion.
Or you can just rescind your motion if you don't have any.
I don't want to rescind my motion.
Okay, so please, please continue.
But this is about the job description, not the process.
This is about the job description, which to me is the start of the entire process.
Okay, thank you, so.
I, I would like legal advice from Robert to look through the different comments and see what is. I don't think it will be that kind, time-consuming for him to glance at these comments and incorporate them or adjust what is written and present us with a, maybe a, a different version of the executive director's job description that we could look at next Friday.
Correct, so with Janice's motion, do we have a second?
If the motion is only to legally review and not post, I'll second.
Correct, that he review, possibly consolidate and offer us a, a copy of the, of the executive director's job description that incorporates our concerns.
Okay.
Wait, are we asking him to write the job description?
That's what it sounds like to me.
It's, that would be.
We are basing, my idea is that this is the basis. This is the step one, the foundation of the job description. John has offered some revisions. You have offered some revisions, although you haven't spoken them, you have them written down. I have some concerns and revisions. That he look at these and, you know, if he's going for leadership and management, he's going to go to leadership and management. And he's going to say, well, this is what John wrote. These were Mary's concerns with wording, these were my concerns with wording. How can we edit this to legally incorporate the concerns? That he may go with what John has said, he may choose something I said, he may choose something Mary says. But in overview, it would be an editing that I would ask him to do of the job description. Not change the basic standard, but to see how, if, how legally we can incorporate our concerns.
I'm just, I don't know, is that a legal question though? Like, are, are you, Diana, attorney? I mean, because I, I, I'm trying to figure this out, because I understand what you're saying, Janice. But I don't know if, if that's his job. Is that what we, we hired him to do, to go ahead and start editing the job description? Because there are no legal requirements for what a job description for an executive director is in the state of Missouri. I don't even know if there's one in other, I don't know if there's one in other states, but in Missouri, there are no requirements.
Right, well, there are labor laws that we have to come with.
Yes, but there's labor laws, general laws that apply to any job post days.
That's probably a bunch of boilerplate that you put in at the end.
Yes.
It doesn't, the, the revised doesn't break labor law as far as Robert's concerned. He, he reviewed it for that. I think the issues are more, what's the content? You know, Janice has some concerns about content, maybe some concerns about number of years' experience. We can talk about those. Then we have to add the physical requirements or accommodation for ADA, we add that. Once we get all those things added, it's a, it's a Google Doc, so we can edit it, we can put comments. And once all those things are on there, then we can send that off to Robert and let, let him decide what's the less risky, more helpful job description for us to do.
Yeah, because I, I feel like this is something that we could discuss ourselves, what the wording is going to be like here. Even though it's going to be, it's going to take time, but I don't.
I think that we as the board can work through the language, incorporate the appropriate legal requirements, and should put to Robert a specific list of legal questions we would like his counsel on.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to have problems going all that way or all any other. He's not, nothing we've talked about is illegal.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm, I'm with you. I don't know that we need a lawyer to sign off on it. Diane?
I don't have any background in employment law, but I don't see why, I, I think it's, it might be useful to have him say, okay, this has everything you need. This has all the boilerplate you need. And beyond that, I don't know that we really need him to. I don't know that we want to pay him, what is hourly rate, is it 300 bucks an hour?
Yep.
I don't know that we want to pay him $300 an hour to write a job description.
So we have, we have a motion on the table to send the list of all the things to John to review. And I currently heard you say to edit. So that is the motion on the table, it has been seconded. Is there any?
I'm going to withdraw my second. I don't think we need to do that. I'm with you, Mary. Let's just put our edits in one consolidated sheet, and then we can come back, just like we do with bylaws.
I would like to have a copy of Mary's comments to review those as, and I, I think you all would want a copy of my comments. And that if we are going to do this review privately this week before our next meeting, then if we have all these pages, then we can come together and do that. Is it possible to get copies of all this?
Yeah, so as we're continuing discussion, Janice, would you like to amend your current motion? It no longer has a second.
No, I don't want to amend it, so there's no second, so the motion dies.
Okay, perfect. So in open discussion on not a motion. Are, are, are all parties that have revisions comfortable submitting said revisions to the group? Or to centralize to Dana, if you're comfortable compiling those? As well as giving us a editable Google document version that we can start, obviously not our master copy, but a copy that we can start editing in. Timeline-wise, we obviously have our next meeting set for next Friday. I appreciate everyone's time and value that a great deal. So are we comfortable to say by maybe early next week, each of us could take a look, make sure we've got all that stuff to Dana, send it out? Obviously, as soon as it's available and you've had time to type it up or whatever, scan it, whatever we need to do.
Send what to Dana?
The, for instance, Mary's revisions to scan it or type it, however she wants, and what questions you have, or if you want to scan it.
Okay, I don't know why we're postponing that till next week and not just making copies up and now and taking them home with us.
Is yours legible and ready to go? Yeah, it's ready to go tonight.
I'd rather not delay it, I have more time on the weekend than I do during the week.
Would you be comfortable getting the editable document, do you need it like tonight or Tuesday morning? Okay, we are closed on Monday for the holiday. So I can get it, the editable, like Google Doc sent out to you and shared as soon as possible, but it's, what is your preference?
Tuesday morning is fine with me.
That would give us the weekend to review the copies we can leave with tonight.
About it?
Does that work, Janice?
I, yes, thank you.
Great.
And are you, are you starting with this one and adding?
That was my question, is do you want a blank document that everyone can add to? Or would you prefer that we start with the current job description? And then you can add in your own notes, maybe have your initial first, so it's like your comment on there. And I can send you like a format.
That would be my preference, to start with his, that's the skeleton, and then we can make our suggestions there.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to start with this, which is a one-page. Yeah, and then we add in, and then we add in the things that.
So probably both documents become available, so we can work between them.
I'd like the editable copy of both of them.
Yeah.
If I may, so if there's actual, so emails to each other, if it's not just information that already exists, is a meeting?
No, we're not doing that.
Okay, so you're just saying like, we would add in these bullet points to the other and then have a meeting where we just have a working meeting where we go through line by line?
Next Friday.
And then whatever the result is.
The only, yeah, the only thing I would caution you is, if someone makes a comment to a document, do not comment on their comment. Because that's deliberation.
Correct, correct.
In my email, I'm sorry, Rob, please.
Well, we're going to have the documents, we're going to put our edits on it, and everybody will be able to see those edits. But we're not going to deliberate on those.
Correct.
We'll talk about them next week.
So as, as, as my page has a lot of comments, I would, just to look at, because it's how I think. But when I have the blank copy of your page, I would make edit suggestions, not my personal comments.
Correct.
Yes, that sounds great.
Don't call the tick for your change, just make the change.
Correct, correct, understand, understood.
Does everyone technically know how to do that in a Google Doc?
No, I would be doing it longhand.
I can figure it out.
Whenever I send the email, I can maybe give a little bit of like directional suggestions on like, if you're adding a line, maybe put your initials first and then your, the line item that you would like to add or something similar, is that okay with you guys?
For those who need coaching, they can call you.
Yes. I'd be happy to help you.
Would you like Mary, are you starting with this one or this one?
We're starting with the revised copy.
Okay, would you like Mary to add in the things she knows that we need for all of our job descriptions that we've already had vetted by legal?
Please.
Like the logo?
But yeah, the folder can fundamentally contain both.
Yes.
I would like both digitally.
I can do that. I'll put both in there and then.
So I don't think we need a motion, we're just, we have our marching order as a team.
Is with the Google Doc, is that, is that going to be compatible with MS Word?
You have to edit it in the Google Doc on the web browser. So if you download it as a Microsoft Word document, it's a separate completely, so then they won't be able to see your edits.
Okay, but then I can download it and edit it and upload something else to add to the folder for everybody else to see?
Yes, technically, we could do that. It might get a little confusing about which edits are whose and which is which. But again, I think maybe I, I can help give like a little bit of directional, directions in the email to all of you about, here's the shared copy and here's how we can indicate who's, who's adding this comment or something like that.
So you don't need software because you have the drive, so you can actually edit it in the drive. The Google Doc will live in the drive. So if you're able to get into your library email, you just have to go to and click on a different app within there, so we.
And if you have circles, you can always email the Microsoft document to myself and Tori. And then we can add your comments in there for you.
Okay.
So we'll help you.
And we're both, again, added to the trustees' email, so if you just send it, although then it opens it up to discuss. So maybe just send it to the two of us.
I'm going to add both copies of the current, of the two we're discussing, the JavaScripts we're discussing. And Mary is going to add in the legal requirement onto your addition to make sure that you guys can all review that as well. And then I will email and share all of that to you guys on Tuesday morning, hopefully by about 10 or 11 o'clock. I'll try and get it done as soon as possible.
And then, thank you, yes, that's perfect. What do we need to make our decision on internal versus external in addition to the job description?
Can I back up?
Yeah, please.
She's going to need a copy of Mary's and my page to, to use photocopy to.
Yes, I can, well, I will get that done at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
If you want me to make physical copies of those tonight too, you can have those.
We do.
We're going to make them.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll get one for each of you.
Thank you. And then what else do we need in addition to a finalized job description? Are there questions, are there other things that we would like to do to make the decision on posting internal versus external? Are we comfortable to make a motion tonight or next week on which direction we would like to proceed, assuming we have a finalized job description?
Is there no way to post without a final job description, right? We can't do it, so we got to wait.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just want to know if there's any other research that could be done simultaneously next week? Do we want to ask for other companies, do we want other bids, do we want one of these to, vendors to come present to us? Is there anything else we'd like to do that can run simultaneously next week?
I'd like, and I can't remember whether it was you or Mary or John who said, and forgive me, said that if we, you know, when we get consensus and have a finalized document, bless you. And we send this out, that, you know, we can see what kind of hits come in a month, we can say four weeks, weeks or whatever. At that point in time, if we do not feel like we have had qualified applications, at that point, we can always go with our, our polished document and have them send it out on a broader search.
That makes sense. So are we then comfortable to make a motion tonight that we will begin pursuit of an internal search process? I would hear said motion.
I move that we seek an internal process similar to the last time, 2021. I move that we seek an internal process.
To begin a process, perfect. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we can have any discussion on that motion?
I, I would modify the motion that we are going to pursue the internal process for a time period of four to six weeks. And if we receive a satisfying quantity of applicants, that we continue internally. If we do not, that we go externally for help in dispersing the announcement.
That's only if he wants that, you don't have to modify your motion.
Yeah, it's a friendly amendment if you.
If you, if you like a time period.
Go eight weeks? Can your amendment be eight weeks instead of six weeks?
That's fine with me.
Eight weeks, starting when? Starting when the job description is final?
When we post.
When we come to a consensus on the job description, which should be next Friday. If we're all working on it during the week.
But you want to send it to the lawyer after you have a consensus, right?
Yeah, probably would recommend to make sure we have not.
Yeah, just a thumbs up, he's not going to do any edits, he's just.
Okay, so John, you accept the friendly amendment that we would go eight weeks from when the job description is finalized or posted?
Eight weeks from when it's posted.
Posted. Postable.
Postable. So John, do you accept the friendly amendment that we would go eight weeks from when the job description is finalized?
No, eight weeks from when it's posted. Because people can't apply for the job until it's posted, so eight weeks from when it's posted, if you're okay with that.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Our, our agreement on the document is different from when it's postable.
Okay, so we have a motion and a friendly amendment that we will move to the internal hiring process to begin, including allowing ourselves an internal timeline of eight weeks from when the job description is posted. That is the motion. And Diana, you seconded the motion with the friendly?
Yeah, I still second it.
And Janice had said also, eight weeks after post, wait, proceed with an internal process unless eight weeks after posting, there's not enough, and then reconsider whether to. And then reconsider, because it, it contained that idea of maybe going to the other.
We still have to pick a firm and do all that, so.
Reconsider means to expand our search.
Yeah.
John, you accept the friendly?
I accept your friendliness, yes.
Diana, you're comfortable seconding?
And when I second the amendment, if, if the wording doesn't sound accurate, obviously, just let me know and I'll.
Any further discussion on the motion that has been seconded? Hearing that, we will move to a rule call vote. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro? Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any other discussion for this evening from the group?
I have a question.
Please.
I know that we're going to start the internal process. Next week, we're discussing the job description, which is. the job description, which seems like a, kind of like a meaty discussion. It's going to be pretty time intensive. Do you want us to prepare anything for that meeting about the internal process? So when we get into like interview questions, dates, timeline, that might be further discussion. So do we want to go ahead and set another meeting for after next week to start that talk?
Echo, you had requested that Tori provide the questions.
Yes, I would like the questions.
In previous searches.
So I can do that before the next meeting. I have those. I can just scan those and send those out.
Yeah, I would, I would say if you have the ability to make a hiring folder that has these materials electronically, that's the easiest way to avoid a ton of emails.
So the only, my only concern is that we share the questions with candidates before, you know what I mean? So is that public information?
Well, so if it's just information and there's no discussion about how to change the questions, like if, I, I understood Echo right now to say she just wants a scan of what was asked last time. Is that what you're saying? So that is just information. We can just email that to you, you know, as soon as I have a minute at my computer. So I can do that tonight. I mean, I have it. I can just scan it and put it in, making a folder. I probably have to do Tuesday.
Previously, those questions, the ones that we wanted them to answer before, we had quite a few applicants. And so as we read it through the applicants, we sent the acceptable, the applicants we found acceptable, we sent them some written questions that we wanted to get those answers back first to learn a little bit more about them. And then different questions were offered at different stages. But that did not go out to all of the general candidate. It was after we made, we did down to the choices we were interested in. I think we had seven or eight last time. And like I said, we had a little bit of attrition because of circumstances. We ended up with three or four.
There were 13 originally.
Originally.
Okay.
But I think you only sent maybe the first round to eight or so.
Yeah, it was seven or eight for the first round of questions.
So I guess the concern is that people, potential candidates would see these interview questions that we would be pulling from. But if we're just sharing the Google Drive with you guys so you can see all the documentation that we just mentioned in this meeting, as long as we are not discussing it in an actual meet, open meeting, it's not going to be posted in minutes afterwards. So when you get to the point where you would like to discuss the actual interview questions and what you would like to ask candidates, I think that there's a delay when we would post that online. So I don't believe that they would actually see that. But for, right now in this moment, we're sharing just so you guys can read what they are. And they would not be posted publicly.
Yeah. And when you get to that point, the public posting is something you decide. So you could say, for example, I mean, your custom now is to do that. You've decided that. But you could say, maybe when you get to the question stage, let's do that, but maybe post after the process or something.
Yes.
Is complete, kind of like you have to do with closed minutes. If you make a decision, you do have to post it, but you can wait until after the building is purchased so that it doesn't interrupt the negotiations of pricing for the building. And that's the same for HR. And if we have a question, we can ask Robert, but I don't think we're to that point. And to be clear, last time, I mean, there were, you know, like 10 pages of possible questions that were discussed. And similar to the job description, there were, there was a meeting where everybody got together with like a long, you know, four hour meeting where those were. So you don't have to use the questions we used before. It's just a starting place is what I'm hearing Echo saying.
Yep, we can share that in a Google folder.
Yeah, I can, I can make, I'll make the Google folder.
Yeah, again, I think that's the second priority to the getting the documents uploaded so we can start making revisions.
So we won't need to add anything for next meeting as far as extra conversation goes? We're kind of going to focus on the job description? You can always send me a revised agenda, of course. I'm just making sure so we can prepare. That's all.
I think so.
Echo, do you want to borrow a library laptop or bring a laptop and, you know, have the document and then in real time, kind of go through and edit in the meeting? Or do you want Dana to do that or, you know?
Yeah, if we could coordinate that ability to work on it real time.
But I mean, do you want to lead that process? Or, and we like provide a laptop for you? Just have it ready?
Yeah, I don't know if I need to lead or if someone can lead.
But I mean, it's just totally up to you whether you want. But if it's going to be us, we should be prepared for that. So you can ask Dana and she can decide if you'd rather have staff do it. That's fine.
I would think it would be. I do better to not be in charge of speaking, thinking, and typing.
I would.
It gives me two out of three. I will do.
Yeah, Dana will decide.
If I'm only, Tori, two minutes, I'll type.
But you might want to make sure is next Friday at four okay timewise?
Yes.
Okay. Because that could be a several hour meeting potentially. So that's okay?
Yes.
Given that last time we had over 20 meetings and scheduling meetings takes a bunch of time, it seemed like this time, even though it's not fun on a Friday afternoon, seems to be like, everybody had that time. That's why I picked it. Is this regularly a time you guys, do you want to just like block out Fridays at four and then, you know, for the future on your calendars? Or do you want to try and find some time while we're all in the same room that we can kind of just say like, once a week, we have a standing meeting that you can cancel if you don't want, but then everybody kind of knows if there's business to be done, you have that. I'm just, that sort of thing would be super helpful for us because then we don't have to spend, every time I schedule a meeting, as you guys know, it takes time from you and me to wait for responses. And, you know, that can take hours of my week just scheduling a meeting.
And if we want to come, you want to come prepared like next week with availability to discuss those future meetings, that's also fine?
Yeah, that's, good point, good point.
But just to keep in mind that there will be a lot of meetings that we'll have to schedule.
Because we have to book a room, too. So I did just tentatively block this room for the next three. I was wondering if you might need that. But I don't know if this is the right time for that or not. And obviously, if one or more of you have a conflict, then you just, like you do with the regular meetings, you say like, oh, I can't do it this Friday. Can we find a different time?
Yeah.
Or skip till the next week.
Also, if someone needs to be absent one week, it's not going to kill.
Of course. Yeah, as long as you have a quorum, it's no big deal. Yeah.
Tori, you may have said this. I apologize. You did reach out to the Kentucky option and you're waiting to hear back?
Oh, no, the Kentucky, that's the people who did the, that's the, the quote you have.
That's the Ohio company? This one says Ohio.
The, the, it was.
The library was in Kentucky. Thank you.
It was a.
I was, I was waiting.
The reason it came to our mind is because, you know, I saw a job posting for a Kentucky library that is similarly sized and a job search company they used.
That was, thank you.
That makes sense.
Got me straight though. Thank you. Thinking ahead in case we needed multiples in the future. But it sounds like we're going to go internally and it's going to be fantastic.
Yes, I think so.
Love it.
I think so.
And the other questions, thank you all for your patience as we work through this and we're all learning and figuring it out. And everyone who was able to join us to participate in the process, we appreciate that. If there's nothing else, we will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys, for your flexibility and ideas. I really appreciate it.